...parts that we would do the things that will help the city and honor them in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Y'all would let us rise to say to you, believe it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the Ashburn, excuse me, this is the Sycamore City Council meeting. Clay Harris, Fred Oster, Attorney District Man.
Discuss and vote to approve agenda next time.
Mayor Wayne Woodruff, Alan Coeter.
I got a problem with agenda.
Jennifer Yon.
Yeah, there you go.
And Jim Gold Brown.
Motion to approve agenda.
Okay, got a motion by Councilman Yon and seconded by Councilman Brown, all in favor. Jay. All right, unanimous, discuss and vote to approve the minutes.
Need to make an adjustment to the minutes. Item number seven has Alan Coker approved and Fred Oster abstaining, and that should be flip flopped. Fred Oster.
Sure should.
Approved and Alan Coker abstained.
I have got that noted here to present to Ms. Bethany. Any other changes?
I move the approved, be approved as amended.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Oster made a motion seconded by Councilman Brown, all in favor. Okay, so Carrie. Out of five, discuss and vote on letter for jail contract. Oh, you want to say something about this, or you want me to?
Uh, I can give him a briefing.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so the city received a letter from the sheriff's office last month saying that the daily fee was increasing from thirty-five to forty dollars per inmate. Uh, as you know, we spent a considerable amount of time last year negotiating a contract with the county and the sheriff's office for jail services and inmate housing. And in that contract, it was thirty-five dollars a day. I was asked by the chief and instructed by the mayor to write a letter terminating that agreement with thirty days notice as the contract provides. And I sent, I hand-delivered, uh, the copy of the letter to the chairman, Mr. Calhoun, and a copy to the sheriff. And that is to go into effect the sixteenth of this month, will be the thirtieth day that the city will, uh, the last day the city flex ten percent and utilizes the services of the jail. So unless the council overrules that, which the council have the authority to do. I think the chief said he was gonna take, we're gonna take them to another jail.
Yes.
Uh, city doesn't have that many inmates. Most of the people that are arrested are broken bonded out immediately, but there are some that have holes. And we even had extradition one time to Texas chief that we had to put somebody in jail.
Two extraditions.
So it does come up, but we're not talking about a large number of people that are incarcerated. That's the, uh, that's the skinny on that.
And to add to what he just said, oh, this letter that we received, the fee increase would go up by June the first. We received this letter two weeks before. We're supposed to have thirty days' notice of any change in the contract. That's what the contract is.
When was the contract signed? In July?
Yeah, I think it was executed in August and it went into effect September first, maybe. Does that sound right? I don't have it.
So they talking about from June till August? They wanted to start the increase at five dollars.
The, the letter was.
Two weeks after we received the letter. We're supposed to have thirty days' notification.
Right. Which, if you received it in June, that's in July, but we're talking in July. That was another month from that.
The letter was dated, the letter was dated in April, I believe.
It was dated.
Postmarked June twelfth, but it was dated April. So the letter itself that we got, the original letter, said it was, it was, it was like April. And I'm, I, I don't give you, correct me on these, I don't have the letter. But it was April, I believe it was in April, the letter was written. The postmark, postage, postage mark on the envelope that it was delivered in was June the twelfth.
What was the letter so late?
Well, that's not for me to answer, that's for the powers to be over there. I couldn't, I mean, I'm not giving you a smart answer, I'm just telling you, I just, I haven't.
Our, our agreement, though, originally was for one year or two years.
It terminated within thirty, with thirty days' notice.
Yeah, either, either, yeah, but was it for one year or two years?
I think it was, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it was one year and it automatically.
Yeah, renewal every year.
It makes, it makes nobody contest it to get renewed.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
But if, if we do contest it, then we got two months to contest it to say, okay.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Thirty days.
Thirty days.
And that was, that was, the thirty day notice was given in the letter from, uh, our city attorney to the county dated June sixteenth, and it takes effect July sixteenth, which is thirty days. It's just one of, of the few thing, of many things where we are not being adequately protected from the county. I move the term, the jail contract be terminated per the attorney's letter.
I'll second it, but I want to talk about it a bit.
Go ahead.
Bill, where you gonna take it, Bourbon Bill? No, I'll gift.
Now, is that to be determined?
I'll disclose that later. If you don't.
Well, my question is, how much is it gonna cost there as opposed to?
Standard price, thirty-five.
Okay.
Thirty-five, and, and it might even be forty, it's just the, the problem arose was the letter was dated in April, postmarked in June. If it was written then, why didn't I get it then?
And I, of course, I wouldn't have any conversation with the county attorney, but I received no notice. And I don't think the mayor or the chief received.
I, I received nothing, nothing.
Of, you know, hey, you were going up on this letter. And the city had a contract for a set amount. And it was.
He wanted to start it in June.
I think it's June.
I think, it was, it was June or July first, but it was, it wasn't even thirty days. It wasn't even thirty days. We didn't get the letter postmarked till June, so we got it on the thirteenth or the fourteenth. And it was supposed to take effect like sixteen days later. And it was like nah.
So we did.
And then when you looked at the letter itself, it was typed, it was typed back in April.
We wasn't, we wasn't notified thirty days in advance, which is a breach of contract.
Not only that, but the letter, if it was dated originally, it was prepared in April, then the plan was to raise the rate whenever they got around to it. And with no regard whatsoever for the city of Sycamore in the terms of the contract.
When is there annual budget coming in July?
Everybody's, everybody's.
Everybody's coming in July, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any more discussion, go? Okay, we got a motion, we got a second. Got a motion by Councilman Oster, a second by Councilman, oh, Brown, all in favor. Okay, unanimous. All right, item six. Now, discussing vote on resolution of tax program. We need to adopt a resolution so that we're able, uh, on the tax program. I want to tell y'all, we got a company that's handling this for us. And, oh, they're called Alpine, I think, Mountain Alpine. But they're really, really good. They've set up the software and everything for us. And we've had some glitches through the software, um, on the taxes. And as a matter of fact, we got someone here tonight talked to us about their taxes and which we'll bring up publicly and put out to the public. But we need a resolution for this tax program so that it clears us to be able to deal with the ones that are actually way overdue for them to enter in five days and so on down the line.
How much is that gonna cost Alpine?
It is not costing.
I don't see it.
It's not costing.
It's not costing anything. Don't get to go with it.
If, uh, I move that the resolution be adopted to allow the use of our tax program.
Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
A second, all in favor. So Carrie. Item seven, discussing vote on letter to Carter and Sloot. The only reason this is put here is, uh, I have not, had no response out of them at all about receiving the letter. We sent it, we signar, uh, we sent it, certified signature requested. We ain't even gotten that back yet. And we haven't had any phone call that they are. Now, they did send a, uh, uh, email to Ashley the other day. And the reason they did is because they wanted to make notification to us that there was two bills that was ninety days due. One was for like twenty-three thousand dollars, the other one was five thousand something. And the reason that they're ninety days due is because I stopped it. And the reason I stopped it was because of the simple reason that we're not getting service. We are being stonewalled in which way. And I wanted an explanation of what these bills were for. Was it on the CD BG project out here at the treasure park? Or was it on the dredging of the pond? And the dredging of the pond, let's touch it in a minute. Haven't heard one word about, well, we need stuff a meeting to discuss this. Uh, we need set up to let this out for bids for engineers. Haven't heard a word. And I have been told about two months ago from our grant writer that she had everything cleared with the state. But yet, we're still sitting here. And y'all know what trouble there's gonna be if that thing overflows.
And everybody knows the rain's been like last week.
Till I get clarification as to what this is for. Because, believe me, I gotta run total what we have already paid them out of our pocket and which we are about completely finished with our part. But I refuse to make payment until I know what exactly that's for.
They're not, they're not, they won't come to a meeting. They won't, they won't do a meeting with us?
Oh, we waiting to hear from them, but.
They haven't, have they been invited to it?
Yes.
Formally invited?
We have sent a certified letter to them requesting that they meet with us on, in August.
I got that in August the tenth.
Yeah.
Which is a workshop, which is fine, I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
As long as we gonna meet them face to face.
Well, if they don't show up, you're looking at something just like Congress. If Congress subpoenas Charlotte to show up to meet them, then they're coming against us. And it's the same operation here when we request that they meet with us.
May I speak on that, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Uh, to piggyback off what the mayor said. The charter, I don't know if it's ever been used or not. But the charter has provision that the council can hold an interest hearing and subpoena people to attend and testify before the council. And if they don't, then they're disobeying, it's like disobeying a subpoena test to tie Congress. To contend to Congress, they would be in contempt of the citizens.
Question.
The city council.
Well, that'd be binding on a vendor that does not live inside the environs of Sycamore, Georgia.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got a contract, we have a contract with them.
Yep.
And the city charter that gives.
What happened with serving, there's mail.
Uh, what process, serving?
Outside of city second.
Okay. Sheriff deputy? Everybody's a dude.
And as council members, we are specifically authorized by our city charter to investigate.
Sure.
Which includes.
Yep.
The subpoena for appearance.
The mayor and I got together and drafted the letter, very short, precise letter. Trying to be nice about it, because how many, how many times have you and I talked about this issue? We can't, you and I talk weekly about it, and things like that. We can't get any movement from Carter and Sloot. And it has delayed everything. And there was a time that Carter and Sloot, it seemed like, was trying to throw me on the bus, trying to put the mayor on the bus. And with the grant writer in the state, and it just wasn't the case. We, the city had done everything it was supposed to do and got it submitted.
Right. You have sense that maybe they don't have the manpower or wherewithal to fill the contract anymore? Because lots, lots of companies have manpower problems. Just that state troops, well, your state control.
If they would communicate that to the mayor, that would probably be acceptable, but it is a professional embarrassment.
Well, is there any way?
It was more embarrassing having to call the mayor, being written about by the newspaper, not responding, you know.
Sixty-five to pick them up, suppose.
You know what I mean?
Okay, so Carter and Sloot has both contracts. The one, or they, they the rider, or both, the three-way stop and the.
They're the engineer, they're not the rider.
Are, is it two separate entities or just one, as far as the?
Two separate grants.
Two separate grants.
Totally separate, but we have the same engineering firm, Carter and Sloot, on both of them.
Okay, is there any way, since we having trouble getting parts here on the three-way? Is there any way to replace them for the one over here as far as the wastewater?
We can do that, but we gotta go back to the whole process again.
Well, it's just took three years already.
Even more.
It's gonna take three years.
We may, we may end up having to do just that. At this point.
Yeah.
The letter to the engineer is basically asking to, for them to itemize their bills. I mean, a bill for twenty-three thousand and one for five thousand for engineering services. Specifically, what type of engineering services on what items? Please itemize the bill.
It's called doing right what you've been talking about. Being good stewardess of the city's management. Exactly.
Mr. American, I had something to add. Sure. If Carter and Sloot leaves either one of those projects before they're finished, whether voluntarily or part, mutual partying ways, I think you're gonna be hard pressed to find an engineering firm to pick up a job, in the middle of the job.
That's true.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if we could, if, as far as I know, I've heard no work going on over here at the.
Nothing, nothing.
I don't mind keeping Carter and Sloot for the road project over here. I have no problem with that at all. Okay, we gonna disagree on this payment coming up, we get that straightened out. But as far as this, the grant for the wastewater, there's been nothing done on it except the engineer draw a diagram of the pond and says overflowing. That's not twenty-five thousand dollars worth.
Bill.
Okay.
That's gonna be a terrible file.
I mean, I, I, I got grant duty right there. You know, come on, I mean, if, if we can take one of them off, which would be that one, and have another engineer come in here. Even if we had to hire, even if we had to just say, okay, look here. I don't mind paying the man an estimate. Pay him five thousand dollars, come in here and make an estimate. And say, here's what I would do it for. Here's a grant, I'd make the grant, I can do that. I, instead of buying one. Carter and Sloot for three years. We gonna take fifteen minutes, five thousand dollars to get started.
Our trouble is, if we drop that engineer, we have to go back, we have to advertise in paper, and we have to give so many days, something like thirty days or something else for engineers to bid on this project out here.
And then assuming you get a bid.
Then we have to have hearings once again.
Okay.
And all, and that's just gonna drag this out. You know, we trying to get Carter and Sloot in here to where y'all can ask them these questions in August. And maybe we can get a little bit of fire up under them. Now, the CD BG project out here in, uh, Norway, Georgia, uh, or Great Myrtle, I think. In Great Myrtle, the pump finally came in. And they have installed the pump. Then we had a fire in the, uh, box control unit there. So now they're waiting on parts. They, they could wire it and get it to go ahead and work where they go ahead and finish the work. Because it'll be about anywhere from four to six weeks before the parts come in that. But they won't warranty the pump because you have to have a certain kind of surge protector for that thing. And so I told them to stop the work until the parts got in because we wanna make sure that thing is under warranty. Yeah, for that. Because that would just cost city more money. So I.
Start all, you start all.
I told them, stop the work.
Right.
Well, one thing about the project out here at the Trigged Pond. Uh, whoever said that, uh, we're three years into this, that, that's very well said. That pond should already been finished.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that. Eleven hundred and ten six, two thousand eight, what I was laying.
And we are.
That's when it's done.
We are whistling past graveyard along that pond.
I agree.
And it's, it's just got to get done.
It's hard to convince me of anything that ain't more important right now than an eight-foot pond with seven foot, eleven inches of septic in it.
That's right.
So we've already sent Carter and Sloot one piece of certified mail?
Yes.
And they, and we haven't gotten any, we haven't gotten the signature. Did we get any notification that they had received it or accepted it?
Not yet.
That's what we wait.
How long's it been since you got all that, I sent all that?
Three weeks or so, what, three, three, four weeks ago?
Yeah, about three weeks.
But the tracking shows that it's been delivered.
I don't know if they actually checked the tracking.
At this point, we have no indication whether they have or have not received it, let alone responded to it. Uh, I would suggest that we send a, a follow-up letter since we have not received a response.
Well, we sent it a certified letter, correct?
Yes.
That they had to sign for?
Yes.
If they, if they sign for it, the product gets mailed back to us immediately, correct?
It should, yep. But we have received nothing. We cannot prove they've received it. Therefore, I suggest sending them follow-up, again, certified.
Send a follow-up letter. But I wanted to let y'all know what's going on, that way y'all are aware of what's happening.
So are we to vote on sending another letter?
Yes.
Is that what we need to vote for?
All right, I move we send this, uh, follow-up letter.
All right, we got, uh, motion by Mr. Oster, Councilman Oster, to send a follow-up letter, seconded by Councilman Yon, all in favor.
Good. We might have to live it back on this one.
All right, how to make department head, Sean?
All right, uh, just a little.
They like the electrical system. They like the electrical system.
Electrical system at the pump, uh, we did get the pump in. The electrician had the panels in his warehouse. His warehouse was struck by lightning. The panels was burnt up in the warehouse. So we're waiting six to eight weeks to get the panels replaced. Uncontrollable. It's just one of the things. But.
You were also gonna bring up about need for fuel tanks?
Yes.
Start looking into.
We're getting generators, we got the generators finished all, well, three. It's not completely wired up and online yet. But with all the generators that we're getting, I wanted to bring to y'all's attention and ask y'all's opinion of how much fuel storage would we like to put in place to have on hand with a storm prediction similar to hurricane Michael of a weeks.
Question.
And.
Yes, what's the consumption rate of fuel? Does it runs on diesel?
Uh, we're, uh, we're running on diesel, and this is early in the stage. We don't have all the generators in. I don't have fuel consumption. This is just something I wanted to bring to y'all's attention, let's start thinking about. Do we want to get an above ground storage tank? We wanna do just, uh, just some ideas, just something to start.
On a trailer anyway, correct?
On a trailer, uh.
That way you can carry it around all of them.
Where would you store it? And how would you secure it?
Uh, I, my warehouse is full. Uh, and that much fuel, I would probably have to park that outside somewhere. Or if it'd be under locking key or.
What's the fire marshal, I had to say about that?
Well, that, that's something we gotta check in as well on all this. And it may have to be depend, and it all depends on the gallon wise we decide to go. Do whether we're doing above ground storage tanks or do we do a portable tank? All the, all that's gotta be talked about. It's, I just wanted to start this tonight and let y'all start to be thinking about it.
I'm gonna throw out a number that ain't nobody wanna hear.
Okay.
I think we need to have enough to run all of, all of the generators for two weeks on hand.
Well, that means a minimum.
I know, probably twenty-five.
It'd be twenty-five, uh, twenty, twenty-five hundred?
Yep, at least.
Uh, that would be absolute minimum.
Yep.
And I know that that would take us two weeks, we don't have the consumption numbers.
That's, that's exactly right, that's my point, that's what we need to know. Last time we had a hurricane, I didn't have power for thirteen days.
Two weeks.
And that's what I'm saying, if we got the generators in place, we just need to start thinking about keeping fuel to keep them running.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a big pile of money.
That's a big pile of money, and that's a big pile of fuel if you don't use them for a year or two.
Right.
So that's something we got to.
Well, you can also use them in non-emergency situations, use that fuel for your other equipment.
Well, I can, I can run off.
Uh, how, well, how can we as council members help you in the, in digging into the information you need? Like consumption and so on.
Well, the consumption, the actual numbers, uh, I can't contact the generator company and find out the actual consumption for the generators that we gonna have.
Well, how can, how can we help?
Uh, just ideas, uh, do, do you want, like y'all threw out a number, twenty-five hundred to three thousand? That's the numbers I'm looking for. Is to, what we was looking for, did we wanna go small or did we wanna go large? Or.
And.
Or portable or, or terminal?
Okay, uh, maybe take a look at what the Defense Surplus Administration has because they have, I, I wanna say three thousand gallons? Uh, towable tanks?
They got them on the truck.
Well, they also make them as tow.
Right, right.
I mean, you can get the truck, you can also get the tow unit as well. I think if we could get the tow unit and it was serviceable.
Three thousand at least.
Yeah, but, I mean, you, again, how many, how many, how many generators are we talking about? Both pump houses, this one, police department, fire department?
Well, place department and, uh, there's property. Place department and. Police department and the well, uh, the little ones up here are pro-.
The repeater and the police department are all pro-.
Okay, but all my, the well, city hall, the patrol building and two pump stations, that'll be five generators, will be all diesel.
Find out what consumption rate would be?
Yeah.
Times, uh, per hour, times twenty-four, times fourteen. That'll give you a number, and it's gonna get a big number.
Yeah, it's gonna be a big number, and this is just some kind of information I just wanted to get everybody on.
If, 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 if we, if we could get a towable unit, if we could go from one place to another, I think that'd be pretty damn handy.
Yep.
Twenty-four thousand, thirty thousand pounds. Diesel's about eight to ten gallons, eight to ten pounds a gallon, not including the weight of the trailers.
Yeah, I know.
And that would, uh, also require, uh, additional license to well, it has to be tanked.
Well, here's what we'll do, in, in case of emergency.
Asmat and.
Asmat and tank, yeah.
We'll, we'll get a, we'll get a eight man harness and we'll put the police department to tow it around.
Anything else?
Uh, the only other thing is, uh, with the garbage, uh, company. We're going to, uh, looking at, uh, changing up from, uh. We're gonna stay with the same company, but the debris pickup, it's just gonna fall back to us, we're just gonna do a little change in contract. We, we are gonna need to rewrite that a little bit, uh, for the services, for them to pick up the cans and us just do the debris like we used to do.
Did you talk to them about dropping the charge?
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
Okay, and actually, we come out better in the long run. I'd like.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Good.
Bill?
Well, I don't have nothing, but I'm on. That's right, I don't have nothing. Don't have heart attacks. I, I don't want you to have a heart attack now.
That ain't gonna happen.
Uh, but I do wanna piggyback on the fuel system, me and Sean.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Three thousand gallon diesel tank, or whatever you're talking about, that's, you know, thirty, forty thousand pounds, you're gonna have, they have C D L upgraded and all that, but. So if you went with the permanent diesel tank in a smaller trailer just to run it around jockey with the trucks.
Well, don't, don't we already have a smaller tank?
I do have one.
Two hundred big gallon.
I do have one, yes.
So, so if you went with something like that, I would make a suggestion, since you're gonna have to put the piping in, get the tank in everything. And find a place to put it, where it be at the spray field or wherever.
With gasoline.
What, put a gasoline tank out there, that way we could just.
For the car.
Well, their trucks, the cars and everything, we just.
We're gonna go into the fuel business, that three thousand gallons, that we might as well go into fuel business with three thousand, a diesel and three thousand. A P, I mean, record gas.
Well, I mean, I, I like the way you think, sir.
It's got you spending money all of a sudden.
Money, I'm just saying.
Well, we gotta spend the money on the fuel anyway.
If not. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, now they just dummy me thinking. But I wouldn't think that it would be correct to say, if we fix to build a three thousand gallon tank. For nothing but diesel, you gotta have a pour pad and all of this.
Might as well go ahead.
Then you gonna have to turn around there.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a big infrastructure investment, ain't no question about that.
About that, but I mean, you know, if you're there building a pad and it's already a hot day, another pad's just another day. And when you sitting there with a crane at seven hundred dollars an hour. Picking up one tank and he does it thirty minutes, well, guess what, we only do it thirty minutes with another tank up there.
Okay, so, you know, let me, let me be.
Man, I'm not saying that's gonna happen on this budget.
I wanna make sure that I'm clear on this. Is the city gonna get into buying gasoline at wholesale to run city vehicles? As well as buying diesel wholesale to run city equipment and the generators?
If, if, if they gonna, if, if we gonna store three thousand gallons for a generator. Number one, you're not gonna use that much in a normal year, you're not gonna lose three thousand.
Right.
Even in fourteen days, you gonna lose three thousand. So, the actual diesel would go bad.
Yes.
After about a year and four months, I think that's what somebody.
And they gotta stabilize gasoline every month or so.
Yeah, so, instead of storing it for nothing but that. If you're gonna go on a three thousand gallon route.
All right.
The two three thousand gallons out there, one for. And a one for gasoline and one for diesel. Or two fifteen hundred, or whatever we gonna come up with. But if we gonna do that, you know, you gonna have to have a bench, and a log, and a pad, and a drainage part and all of this. But the big whoop-de-doo, talking about big.
That is a big whoop-de-doo.
Exactly, but there's no need just to do diesel and not gasoline.
Okay.
Cause if we gonna buy it at cost, then I'd rather buy gasoline at cost, cause we use more of it.
Okay.
As opposed to diesel.
Let me propose something.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Bill. Get us fuel consumption for your departments for the last six months.
Yeah.
And let's see what kind of volume we're talking about that we're gonna be buying.
We can actually pull that force.
Yeah, I, I mean, I figured we kept it.
Yeah.
And finding out what the consumption rate for these generators are, that'll give us the kind of volume we're gonna need. On a case-by-case basis, in event disaster falls or we're, we're fueling up vehicles. Because I got a sneaking suspicion that keeping three thousand gallon gasoline has its own unique licensing issues.
Well, they'll be, comments and everything with the. Following line there.
Can you get the data, the wall you can, uh, by the tenth, the workshop, they've got it scheduled?
It says they'll, they'll put a pad, and they'll put a containment wall around it. When I used to deliver the gas and diesel, they'll, they'll just, they'll just come and you'll put a block wall or a lip and have a containment wall. So if, if the gas spills out in there with the diesel, it can be pumped out, in, in a, in a, you know, it usually.
Handle what it was in the tank.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh.
Meet all the asmat requirements.
Yeah, it's, it, it's.
It's a big, it's a big job.
It, it is, it's, 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 like you said, it's, uh, it's a pad and all.
That's twenty-four thousand pounds per tank, not counting the weight of the tank.
Well, my captain pump is gonna have to pump it out.
Right, I mean, the fuel itself.
Yeah, you gotta pump fuel out. I mean, okay, we gonna have to have two pumps, a little big pump, a gas pump. Or one from the, get it from one of these doors that's closed down, it's got two knobs on it. I mean, we, like I said, we talking about a big investment.
Well, we can, Sean said.
We got a year to talk about it.
We get the information, we have to have to start planning or thinking by our August workshop. I think that'd be the, the time to pick it up, pick up this thing again.
Well, if we gonna talk it, we need to talk to somebody besides these folks, if we talking engineering. I don't think we need to pass that by.
Not hard.
Carter and.
Yeah, let's not call Carter and Slope about that.
I think we gonna, we gonna talk to a different engineer on that.
I hear you.
Oh, yeah.
I don't have nothing else, I, I have nothing I need.
Okay.
I was just piggybacking on the.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with.
No, no, I, I, I know.
I mean, I.
I agree with you.
I've been thinking a long time about that, but it's not issue.
Agree with you.
All right, I'm fixing to call on our court clerk, but she's got something, she's gotta present to y'all, but this is, uh, something that, but you're gonna have to be done. Flo is here, Charlotte?
Be there for me, not against me.
I am, I'm just still a little farther away.
Um, so, we ain't amended it. Well, we don't have choice, uh, so, it's, uh, we need a certified court translator. And, uh, then I gave Wayne the papers for it, and it's not a choice we had, it, we had to have it.
What is it?
A court translator or Spanish translation for court. You got those up there, Wayne?
Yeah, I got them.
Nothing, nothing, uh, I, I, I don't wanna muddy up the water and throw any more monkey wrenches. But for a very long time, on Sundays down in Piggy Wigley. All the migrant workers, they didn't speak Spanish. They were Haitians, they spoke French Creole.
Yeah.
And it's a very Haitian French Creole, because nobody in Piggy Wigley could understand what anyone was saying. All I could do was tell them my pencil was large. So, monkey on this drum. Please, would have the newspaper.
So this is the cheapest translator that we have found.
Just to be, to clarify, uh, where is this mandate coming from?
You want me to answer for you? All right. We scaved by for years because we've had Spanish speaking or Latino officers off and on that worked here. And we've always used them. But when you've got somebody you're prosecuting, and, and, and the, the solicitor can speak in on this. If we have one of our officers go up there talking for the judge, and then the judge is telling him, he's telling the subject what he wants to know. You've got a certified sworn officer that's working for the court system. Translate between the judge, so then it can simply be said, well, the judge said this, but the officer told him this. And then he told the officer this, and the officer decided he wants, so with an independent contractor, that takes that equation out. Then it falls on somebody that's licensed and bonded, am I not correct, sir?
Yes, it stems from Title twenty-four, the Evidence Code that Georgia adopted. Ten, eleven, twelve years ago, which is, which are the federal rules of evidence. And in order for a judge to take a plea, he has to take testimony from a defendant. Under oath, and if that defendant cannot speak the same language, it has to be translated from someone who is then put under oath as well. Or the plea is invalid, so.
Who's Virginia's last name?
Williams.
I have it written over there, uh, at, uh, Williams, Williams.
I, I've, I have her.
Go nicely.
I have, uh, been in another court, she's pretty good.
So we don't have a choice in this matter?
How long have we known?
That's why I recommended.
Uh, we just found out.
It's that, sort of last court that we had, first time we ran into this problem.
Yep.
Well, I was in the court three months ago. And we ran into the problem with no translator except for one of the guys that was sitting up here, they had him a ticket, he kept translating.
Exactly.
Didn't have one.
We did not.
So we've known it for a while. We know we gonna need one.
No, that it was absolute, had to happen.
Mr. Mayor. I would make a motion. I move that this council declare ourselves to have an emergency for the purposes of amending the budget to resolve this matter.
Always asking for two thousand dollar.
I stand that.
Heard the amendment of the budget.
May I speak, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, you don't have to do anything. But if Judge Share appoints somebody, you're gonna pay for it anyway, so.
So should we wait for that?
Well.
What's your, what is your advice, counsel?
If we don't have one, we're gonna need one. That's the way it seems to work, right, Charlotte?
Yes.
We have someone that speaks Spanish and can't translate it.
So this person's only gonna show up on court days?
Right.
And I don't know that she would come to every court, just when we, we have someone that comes in that needs a translator. Then, then we call upon her to do it.
Well.
So, notice, if you, if you wanna wait and let the judge appoint someone as a translator, you can do that. And he's gonna sign an order saying, present this to the clerk of the city and he'll be paid. But you can do it the way that Charlotte is talking about it as well, it's up to you guys, how you wanna do it. If you don't wanna amend the budget right now to do that.
Well.
If you wait for the judge, it's gonna be, they run about sixty, sixty-five dollars an hour.
And then see.
Uh, plus sixty-five cent a mile.
This lady's agreed to it twenty-five dollars a mile.
Yep, uh.
That's the bargain, but to do it, we gotta amend the budget.
We've got, not necessarily, because, uh, according to this note the mayor passed around, and everybody's got a copy. A certified court translator. Bottom line, it should cost approximately eighteen hundred dollars a year.
Who's budget's coming out of?
I should've come out with budget, I would take that out.
It'll come into court.
Okay.
If you look in your, in your, uh, budget package.
Yeah.
You'll find under the court page.
Okay.
Uh, the, the contingency is six thousand dollars.
Okay, so, then, then fine.
Yeah.
All right.
And we have sufficient in the contingency without an amendment.
Okay.
At this time, uh, all we need to do is approve using a, this certified court translator based on these numbers.
Okay, then I'm good with that, forget I even mentioned it.
I move, we, uh, hire the court translator at twenty-five dollars an hour, approximately eighteen hundred dollars a year.
We got a amendment, we got a second by, uh, Councilman, uh.
I do, I do wanna add one other thing before we vote. Uh, we had received another price of, a quote from another certified translator. Of a great deal, almost sixty dollars an hour.
Mm-hmm, plus mileage.
So, this, this is a good move on our part. Okay, that's all, I just wanted to share that. Got a motion to say?
I have drawn it.
Okay, I'll just wait then.
See there, that's why contingency is a problem.
When I, when I, when I said the word, it sounds pretty, somebody's laughing.
Count four on the back. Say that again? Say that whole time. On the back. He, he done a good job.
Okay.
What's that, what did I do?
The translator?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was like six thousand one. You're welcome, y'all, have a thank you.
All right, uh, let's move to item nine, publican button, we have public here, y'all wanna come on up here? We all can be heard.
Feel free to come, who would you have be in here?
Uh, this guy.
Yeah, come on, come on up, let's bug him, see.
Hi, my, my name is James Hornsby, and this is my wife, Deborah Hornsby. Uh, we bought the house up here on one sixty Sycamore.
Scotty Wilkerson, I mean.
We love this city, I mean, we came from Jacksonville and it, this, this place is awesome, it's awesome. Well, everybody has, everybody's been generous, and the city works people. Hands down the best. I mean, your guys are just Johnny on the spot, even though you sent three of them up there to get a wild chicken out for our property, but other than that, you know.
Swell their head.
Well, they, they, they need it.
You probably glad you don't need to fix that chicken, girl, cause you can't get rid of it.
Yeah.
By law.
By law.
Uh, anyway, the chicken went to a good home, not somebody's frying pan, at least that's what I heard. Uh, in Jacksonville, when we pay our city, I mean, our city and local, anyway, our taxes, it's all in one lump sum. We had no idea that it was separate here. Uh, they sent this, uh, notice to the Wilkerson's address instead of ours. So it got to us late, we had no idea. When we found out about it, we paid it, but we got penalized for something we didn't know. Uh, twice. And we were just wondering if there's any way they could waive those late fees and the bill fees. I mean, we, you know, we, we always paid our taxes.
How much is our late fee?
Will we take a look at that?
Sure, please, please. That way the, the media can't get me on.
Are you, are you?
We almost had a news black out there then.
No, full, we paid in full.
Oh, yeah, I pay everything.
Whatever's on there, we pay.
What, what I'm saying is, is any of it divided up with Wilkerson's?
Sorry.
No, no, it, it wasn't.
No.
So y'all, when y'all bought it, y'all agreed to pay the taxes only as.
Right, right, Scotty paid like the first three months and then we paid.
How much?
Yeah.
Did y'all prorate it?
I don't know how much of that amount due is.
We, we did, um, we went in, we paid the taxes, um, retroired it a little bit, we don't have a mortgage, so.
So you would've had it prorated at the closing table?
What were the penalties?
Uh, two months of late fees, or two, you know, two.
What did y'all close on the house?
Uh, March of last year.
Okay, so they would've paid through the closing day?
Right.
Their portion of the taxes.
Right, and then we just wrote them out a check and paid it, and then when the taxes came due again, I went down there and paid again. But nobody ever told us we had city tax, so.
Okay, here with that, we can count. Found that out the wrong way.
Well.
Yeah, and then they sent, paid that thing, saying they have a, they would put a lien on it if we didn't pay.
No, did you receive any other notice besides that?
Just that one, or?
No, the other notice the girl kept.
Oh, she kept the other notice, you see where it was whited out the Wilkerson's new address, wasn't it? Wasn't it whited out the Wilkerson's address?
Right, their new address.
And then ours was written in and typed in or something.
Alright.
How much was that total? Total due, was the penalty, do you remember?
Uh, she would know, the total due, the penalties, and the late fees.
Two, um, it was.
I think you mentioned about fifty dollars?
Well, one, we had one late fee, I think it was like twenty-eight dollars or something in late fees, and then she said, oh, by the way, we just got, we just sent more late fees, yet, uh, on the first for you, and I was like, oh, we didn't, we never got this. So, we got two late fees and interest that we never knew about.
According, according to what I'm hearing on this, my suggestion to council would be to waive those late fees in lieu that they had not received the notice to start with, and let's cut them, let us cut them first next week a check for those late fees to give back to them.
I concur enthusiastically, and tell you what, how long ago was it that four hundred water bills ended up out in the county? Because a, a certain agency of government didn't do their job.
Sure, we're Duvall County, where they're from, is the whole county, is the whole city too.
Right.
So, everything, so that's why they don't get city and county taxes, unlike here.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, that's why they're not used to it.
Can somebody give me a motion? Okay, I got a motion, my god, I'm ready. Yes, all in favor?
Thank you, everybody.
They will be waived, uh, monthly, if you'll come back here, uh, sometime around lunch, a little bit before. I'll have her cut you a check for that, uh.
Is the city gun range open for the people here, the public? No?
No, sir, we're, we're talking about opening it up, but we've had some issues in the past, it's only for law enforcement.
I'm glad I asked, 'cause my father-in-law just passed away, he, he, he do.
Let me make copy.
Okay.
So, I have the right individual stuff.
And by the way, welcome to Sycamore.
Thank you.
We are happy to be here.
Tell me, you, you moved from Jacksonville here, how are you coping with the traffic?
I, I, I get, this red light down here really sucks, you know, the only one you got.
We don't have one.
They sold railroad, the railroad.
Sold a red light a few years ago.
And we tried to get it back every single.
Well, nobody's been using it so.
We visit Jacksonville now, and I'm just a shipwreck, I go down there, and I was a, I was a, a professional truck driver for, forever. I think it came out of my mom's.
Do, do, do you go there on one from Waycross, or do you get on the ten?
No, we, we run seventy-five to ten and go in, yeah, it's, yeah, that's the best way, Waycross takes forever.
Yes, it does.
Plus Waycross, I, I don't know, I don't really, I work for medical waste company, we service all the doctors off, you know, Waycross is kinda.
I know.
Our version of a traffic jam is one tractor and three cars at the same stop sign.
Well, all I see, when I, when I see the farm equipment going down the road, it, it warms my heart, because that's what makes this nation what it is. 'Cause without the farming community, we'd be starving to death.
That's what make the target cameo.
Yeah, and every time I see one of those, uh, warthogs fly over our house, I think that that's a sound of freedom.
Exactly.
And a cockatoo that keeps circling our house. But anyway, we are very grateful for this city and glad to be here.
We're, we're glad to have y'all.
Yeah, thank you.
Any, anytime you need me.
Oh.
With. Get your call next week.
Okay.
Where's she, this woman showed me out of the blue, what, uh, ten days ago?
Something like that.
And I thought, what in the world is this? Where did I meet, where did I meet y'all?
So, all these sounders you're saying are here, so when you hear the police sirens come by, this.
Not at all, not at all, it makes me, uh, hope that you guys are safe.
When did I meet you with Dave?
Well, I don't, I don't know.
He's got my cell.
Or, or did Dave handle sale of the house? Okay, yeah, I told his daughter. And I miss, I miss his restaurant.
Yeah, Dave's good man.
Yes, he is, he's good at it.
Well, it's good to hear you guys talking about what's going on around here and things like that, it's, it's.
Well, you're welcome, every second, Thursday of the month, come back.
But you were talking about the diesel, you would only have to carry that amount of diesel during the storm season, you wouldn't have to fill that tank all the way up.
What we, what we trying to do is go away with, depending on the county.
Yeah.
'Cause we had to go to the county and buy it now.
Really?
So, if it had to fail, we wouldn't have to.
Well, then you don't have to answer to nobody but your own.
Hello.
That's right, well, thank you guys.
But see, I made a big deal on the, on the budget, so right now we saying no.
So, you guys transport your, your prisoners to a different area.
Don't, please don't pick at that scam. Some, 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 some have been praying for our ruination before tonight with this apple. Give me a hold of some time, I'll explain the situation.
I had a, a, a friend of mine back in the past that was, uh, retired from the FBI, whatever, and he went, he went to small communities, became their law enforcement with his own vehicle, and, and he had to transport his prisoner like a hundred miles to. That was wild, anyway, thanks again.
Thank you.
Any concerns, y'all call us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public input?
Anybody else got public input? Okay.